Hey, good to see you everybody. Thank you everyone, call this meeting the order. First thing is election of board officers.
All set?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Mike Clapson Chair.
I'll second that.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Want to oppose? Bob, you still, uh, we'll get to that later on when... We're gonna have now go for police?
Are we gonna what?
The representative to go.
Oh, uh...
That was Rick?
Yeah, it was Rick.
I think they'll be in for the reappointment.
I was gonna say we'll have to discuss that in committee, but I would, I would make the motion that Bob Bixby be reappointed as clerk for the coming year.
All right, is there a second to that? All right, any further conversation? Hearing none, all in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
No. Had to do it.
All right. And the agenda additions or deletions? Hearing none. Approval of the regular meeting February 16th. I have a candy in my mouth. Is there a motion for approval?
Have them look them over. I move accept them as presented.
Do you do them both, Bob?
Yeah, I don't them both really.
I'll second that because they look good to me too.
Do them both and have it done.
All right, we're gonna do both.
I got a note about a correction for the 216 minutes for the discussion on comp time. It was 32 hours of overtime that equaled 48 straight time, and I had 30.
So just correct the number?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with that as long as Bob is.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, all those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, this is proposed minutes.
You show me as recused because I wasn't here.
All right. Road Commissioners Report.
Just an update, um, having issues with getting salt from our new supplier, trying to make things work best we can. Uh, the grader just come back today with another repair on it. And that's about all I had.
Any questions for the Road Commissioner?
Cash, uh, the other day I had a little discussion with Mr. Furman, uh, last year we were up there and looked at his driveway with the water pooling at the end.
Just by Roy's?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. He's got the same problem again. I don't know what the answer is. There seems to be a lot of water this year everywhere.
We'll have to look at it.
And I told him it passed along to him.
Yes. So, they raised the road, but they pitch it towards our driveways. Why not raise it and pitch it the other side where there isn't one driveway all the way up the street?
And that's where, when you turn a road, you have a slight crown in it. It's a lot it does.
I understand, uh, but I never had a puddle of water in my driveway until now. Never. I've been there 24 years.
When we did that road, we, there wasn't a reclaim, grinding it up to keep it down because of expenses though.
Okay.
I'm wondering if, um, we could actually come in that way and just off the edge of the road on the shoulder within the, within a right of way if we can reshim that, that your driveway, if that would bottleneck that water though.
I don't care about the summertime or the springtime. I only care about the wintertime when it puddles up near water and it turns to ice and be back out of our driveway onto that street.
Yep.
I don't want to stop and slide out onto Moulton Avenue.
Right. It seems to be all the way down.
All the way down.
All the way down the street.
Every driveway.
Yeah, well, it's coming, I don't know, coming right down through, you put some crushed stone in and, you know, it follows that somewhat, but then it just comes into the driveways. Looking at probably some cash to fix it too. Say, I think if they're gonna resurface it, maybe grind it down.
Is it, um, gravel driveway or is it asphalt?
It's a tar driveway right there.
Yeah.
Yep, asphalt. Yeah, so I'm wondering if we can actually, yeah, uh, maybe we can look at actually doing a tar down the whole length of that shoulder to raise it up to have basically make a sluice way or it's like, not a ditch or anything, but just a bevel with tar, just to flush it up so the water doesn't run down through there.
Kinda like what you did up here to flush the water?
Uh, no, that was actually a curb up there.
Oh, how was that?
Up around the corner.
So you'd have to wait till we get somebody in here paving to do that?
Yep, and that's been an issue too because I got four driveways on, uh, Walker Mountain that we, when we did Walker Mountain, I can't even get private or the commercial payers that do that kind of work to, because you take Wilk and, uh, like Pike, they don't do them small jobs, sort of say.
There, is there anybody that does?
There is.
That kinda...
And they're so tied up, I can't even get them to do them four driveways up there. Actually, I was looking at them at the office this morning down to the garage here. The, I was gonna get in contact with them, see if I can get on the list to get things done and I'll see, I'll have them come look at that situation.
How many, I mean, most of the driveways down Moulton Avenue, you guys, most of you are probably asphalt, aren't you? You're not, okay.
No.
So, I mean, because the gravel ones, we can always, I would think, fix relatively easy.
If you set gravel in there, if you don't, you're gonna have, build it up and you have a dam. You gotta, you gotta work the hole.
Gotta figure out how to get it.
Basically start up the Bob's house and come down through there because it's the slopes, seems to level out just past Bob's. Bob's on a little bit higher incline right there, and I don't think, well, actually...
Mine will pool some this year now, yeah.
Yeah, and then by the little brown house by you does too.
Well, that is a different situation, you'd have to look at that.
Yeah, I know.
So, so your intention is sooner rather than later, get in contact with some of the payers?
I am, I'll get, go get in contact with those payers for that there and I'll tie this right in with it.
Okay.
Yeah. Because up there, we did some culvert repairs on asphalt driveways where we had to cut it, put a little culvert in. It's been gravel. Actually, it's actually better to have that gravel there at least a year and everything settled, that way if you paved it fresh, you end up...
I have patience.
Well, because we talked about someone last year.
I know, I know, and it's still there.
To be honest with you, I forgot about it. I really have.
Can you report back, uh?
Yep.
With any information, uh, maybe at the next meeting?
Yep.
The other reality too is if they know, a company, if they know they've got two days worth of work in town rather than a half a day, maybe they'll jump at it because they, I mean, more work, you know, maybe it'll push us a little bit higher on the list, who knows? I don't know. Obviously, we're still a little ways away from paving, but...
But we did, uh, East Clarendon Road and then part of, um, North Sudsbury Road, we ended up getting a outfit out of Randolph, which won't have back again.
Yeah, I remember that problem, yeah.
But I was at the mercy of getting them done and, and you'd never know until you try somebody.
Yeah.
I will keep on it and make a, put a note in there that next, uh, meeting, see what we hear from the payers. Okay, guys? Um, anything else under highway?
I'm all set on that part.
Okay. Comp time draft policy.
I'll iterate on that, Heidi. Um, there's a copy for each one of you guys.
Yeah.
Um, up for discussion between you.
All right, I think we want to include Heidi in on this so that we, uh, everybody has an understanding of what our policy is. Basically, um, for the road crew, when they're, instead of taking a pay or salary, they'll take comp time, but then it's understood that it has to be, if they accrue this comp time, it has to be used by the end of the, this, the fiscal year.
No.
No, calendar year.
Calendar year, I'm sorry. Um, and if it's not used, then what is being proposed is that the town then will pay...
Do a payout on it.
Pay, give a payout by the end of the year.
So, can I start with just two comments?
Go for it.
Um, well, I guess three. I guess first thing I'll say is the, the three that were charged with putting this together at our, whatever that was, last regular meeting, I guess, so start off by saying thank you for at least working on putting it together. However, on the flip side of that, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this, and there's really a couple things that come to mind. First thing, whatever we do is gonna be gospel forever, so we need to approach this subject with the thought of precedent because we're gonna set precedent that's gonna be way, way down the road, longer than any of us are sitting here. So, that's something that's been weighing on me as we approach this. I also, and this is, and I, I truly, if you held the vote right now, I haven't made my mind up. I don't know which way to go on this, and I'm coming in perfectly honest saying that. But the second thing that has been weighing on the back of my mind is we're approving something that except for municipalities is illegal anywhere else in this country. Any business in this country is not allowed to do this. It's only municipalities that are allowed to do this. And, okay, it's, it's legal for municipalities, that's fine, that's one way to look at it, but at the same time, from my perspective looking at it, it is somewhat of a double standard in our country that, or at least in the state of Vermont. So, I just throw in and putting all the cards on the table where my struggles with this are and my hesitancy to dive into it. Because, again, it's, it is gonna be something that's gonna be, once you said it, it's, this is, this is never going away.
Yeah.
You're, you, it's, you know, we talk about how hard it is, you, you give a benefit, you can't take it back. It's not coming back, so what, if it's...
Can I say something?
It's gonna be done, so.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Um, I, I was handed this thing this afternoon, so I didn't have a whole lot of time to actually look at it. I don't think we should act on something like this today. If you want to read it out loud for the camera and let the people, the townspeople know what you're deciding, and then wait till the next meeting to see if we get any feedback, there's no reason that we have to pass this tonight.
I think the suggestion is to read this for the camera, and Rob, you're so good at that.
Why is it whenever anything's gotta get read, it gets handed to me?
Because I'm good at it.
Yeah, so this is to be added to the, um, the proposal, I should say, it's not, nothing's been done. So the proposal tonight that's been presented for discussion, um, is this'll go in the employee personnel policy for the town of Clarendon, and it's an added section, so it's gonna be totally new. And it says, "Full-time highway employees are eligible for comp time, which is to be earned and used on a calendar year basis. Comp time can be accrued up to 32 hours of overtime, which is equal to 48 hours of straight time. The 48 hours of straight time may be used for time off. If time is not expended by December 31st, the remaining balance is to be paid out in the form of overtime hours worked. Comp time off will be scheduled at the discretion of the Road Commissioner upon consultation with the employee."
All right, now Bob and I being the longest-serving board members at this time, do you remember when Bert was the Road Commissioner? And his dad was the Chair of the Board?
Yep.
Select Board. Do you remember him granting comp time rather than pay?
If I recall, it was done just on a very short period of time.
That's right.
For, for maybe, uh, one winter or something because there was a, some discussion, then it never went no farther. It ended at the end of that snow season, as I, as I recall that.
So we're talking back in the 90s then or 80s?
In the 90s, I believe it was.
90s, yeah, probably.
I was gonna say, that's...
Because I was here in 1990.
And, and, um, didn't work out too well because, uh, we didn't have time clocks and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
When we did that, and I think that Linda Trombley, who was the Assistant, Select Board Assistant, had some issues because one guy would say one thing and another guy, and that's why we discontinued it.
Yeah.
We said, no.
And you know, I, I kinda agree with Robert, I've had a lot of thoughts on this thing. Well, my first thought went back a couple of meetings ago when I thought, were they gonna get time to use this up? That was my first thought. And then as I think about it, is it actually fair to the employees doing it that way? Give them the money and let them do as they want. If they want to take a day of vacation or something, then that's up to them, but, uh, don't be going this route, I don't believe, right now.
What's our average, and I didn't research this, I'll be honest, even after our last discussion, what's our average number of weeks vacation for a road crew employee right now?
Heidi question, probably...
I'm just wondering what the average is, that's all.
Average, probably?
Either four or five.
So an average of four or five weeks?
Without including everything, vacation, personal, sick time, holidays.
Okay, so time, so just a general statement of time off in the year, whether it's holidays, whatever, is four or five weeks depending on?
As a whole.
As a whole.
Forty-eight hours, you're talking about a whole week.
Yeah.
And they're gonna take it in the summertime when, I mean, they're earning their overtime in the winter, and then I know that there's times in the winter when you could probably let them go because there's nothing for them to do, but in the summertime, you're gonna want them.
We seem to stay busy. We don't sit in a shop.
In the summertime, you mean?
Uh, year round.
Yeah.
We're going all the time.
I also have a problem, I, I, a lot of people have told me, and I, and nothing, no offense to you, Cash, but this policy was created by you, Katie, and Heidi.
That's...
You have a conflict of interest because this includes you. I think it should have been another select person.
Well, that was open, that was what we're, talked about the last meeting before you were...
It was an open discussion.
Open discussion, and that's what was recommended by the rest of the Select Board at that time.
So what?
So, I mean, I couldn't step down from it.
I mean, I just...
It's already done, kinda, it's already drafted.
It was my understanding, just to give Art a little background, that, and I wasn't at the last meeting either, but it was my understanding, um, when I was asked to sit in and help with this, that the information that we put into this draft policy was, was decided on or was talked about at the last board meeting.
That's correct. There was a couple ideas batted around.
And that we just needed to formulate how it was going to be worded. That was my understanding. We didn't choose 32 and 48, we, that was all a previous discussion on a previous board meeting.
I know that a week...
And that was...
It was a week that got batted around at that meeting, is what we said for a cap. And, and there was a few of us that were like, that might be too much for us. Because I, I remember that coming out too, that we were like, uh, maximum of a week, but I don't know if we want to go that high. Um, again, I'm, I'm wrestling with it. I, I don't know what the answer is, but I'll tell you that it's certainly a, a complicated subject. And I do, um, agree with Art that I, I, I absolutely think that, considering it did come across our desks today, I don't think there's anything wrong with chewing on it for a couple more weeks before actually deciding what we're gonna do.
Well, I would like to hear from other towns throughout the state and see what their policies are, that's...
See how many people are doing it, you mean?
Yeah. Um, and that would also give us some guidance. Personally, where I worked, there wasn't anything, we didn't have that, you got paid for when you worked.
Well, again, it's ill, it's illegal in the business world. You can't do this in the business world.
Well, that's what I was thinking when I first got it. It would have been nice if I could, you know, find a town that already has this implemented that I could actually call them and say, how's it working out? You know, is this a good, is this a good idea? But, you know, since I got it this afternoon, I didn't have time for that. And I don't have a problem calling other towns and getting that information.
That's, uh, we should do some research further on this. So, I think, uh, if no one has any objection, we could table this, and the next two weeks we go ahead and research what other towns in the state do.
I'll, I'll make a motion to table it and put it on next meeting's agenda, which is, I think, the 28th or whatever it is.
28.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are you any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Approval of Select Board morgues, I think Art's got them now, but you folks, guests, can go look at it, see how we're spending your money. Guests, there's a lot of folks sitting here tonight, is anyone want to be considered a guest?
Mr. Chairman, some of, some of these folks are, uh, on the agenda for, uh, item under the old business.
Okay, all right. Public comments, any public comments? All right, old business, noise, speed limit complaint.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I asked to have this issue put on the agenda. I will rescue myself from it because it does involve myself, my family, and close ties right there, but I would like to join in the conversation as a citizen.
All right.
Can I do that?
Yeah. Technically, I think we're all supposed to chime in, I don't have a problem with you sharing what's going on in your neighborhood, Bob.
Okay.
I got no problem.
Okay, well, okay, I'll start off. We've got a problem on Moulton Avenue with noise and speed. It's been going on for two years, I've talked to the zoning administrator and never got nowhere. Uh, I don't know if these other people have or not, I can't speak for them, but it's getting to the point of where it's becoming unbearable. There's no peace and quiet in your own homes anymore up there with the noise of the motorcycles and the vehicles with the loud mufflers and no mufflers, uh, four-wheelers up and down the road and all this stuff.
Are they local folks?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Most, some of it, not all of it.
Yeah.
Not all of it, some of it is people traveling through, but there is a lot of it. And having said that, I'll let these people maybe chime in and see what they got to say.
Can, can I ask one question first, Bob?
Sure.
Before we go around, the last time I think you mentioned something to us, there was questions being raised, and I know this is why you went to the zoning administrator, because there's questions about whether or not there was a business being operated...
Exactly.
Outside of the zoning on the avenue. Did, was there ever any conclusions about if there actually is one or not?
What I got from the zoning administrator, and this was a year ago now, was the last time I talked to him because it just, I could see I was getting nowhere. But he told me that, uh, he didn't see no sign out, he drove by once and he didn't see a bunch of cars with the hood up, he didn't think there was one in the business, and that's where it stood.
That's where it ended?
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I guess before we go around, what I would say is we all know that we're gonna have a new zoning administrator likely in the next two to three weeks.
Right.
I think it should be one of the first issues that gets passed on to the new zoning administrator to research, and if we need that, to make that a motion to start the conversation, I am more than happy to make that motion, that the new zoning administrator, this needs to be one of the first things on the docket when that person gets appointed.
That would be good, Robert.
So, so I will make that a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Um, I'm wondering, before we go to folks out in the audience here, I'm wondering if, Katie, did we ever give the sheriff a call on it?
For noise or speed?
Yeah, both.
Um, I think we have multiple times.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's been multiple.
And we never had any reports back from the Sheriff's Department, did we?
I will say this, uh, I do know it was passed along to Rick, and I do know that Rick passed it to the Sheriff's Department. Beyond that, I can't tell you.
Was it Sergeant?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
How many hours a week do we have the sheriff's patrol?
Thirty, right?
Forty hours.
Yeah.
Thirty or forty?
Forty.
It's, it's in a full forty now?
Forty hours.
I was gonna say, I think it's full, I thought we were at thirty. I thought we were, we may need to pull the contract because I thought we were only at thirty.
Yeah, and that, we, we're gonna see head outwards and then upgrade it.
I'm pretty sure it was thirty.
Oh, we upped it. From that, we were splitting with Wallingford at twenty.
Correct.
Now we upped it ten.
And that, we went to thirty.
Went up to thirty.
I have never seen the sheriff's car go by our house, and I'm sure if the man drove by, he would see all this going on. When you sit there and you have ten or twelve motorcycles going at the same time, you can't hear a damn thing. That's why, I can't hear you back here. I mean, we gotta do something because Moulton Avenue is really failing, not only that house, but another house on the street, but we've gotta do something about these guys riding their motorcycles. I know we're not, the, the Sheriff's Department is not supposed to chase them, that they ride up and down the street, no helmets on.
Really?
We truck and put a fence up between our place and theirs because we have two little babies under three years old that play out there. We thought that would be nice. Yup. Couple weeks later, what happened? They backed into the fence. This is what we got down there to deal with and all this noise that's going on, and we, I saw them with a barrel of used oil. Now, who knows where that went? That wasn't supposed to happen in that school district because that would pollute the water. And nobody's doing anything.
We did, we determined, I thought we did, that they just rent that place, right? They don't...
See, it isn't that they just ride their motorcycles.
They do rent it.
I spoke to them one day.
It's a rental property.
That day on, I had a target on me, so they stopped in front of my house and they revved their motors. When I'm literally sitting in my car in front of them, he flipped me off, go down the road, they're riding wheelies, I saw a guy pulling one day going nuts on him because he almost hit him, and they all surrounded him, threatened the guy, the guy was in his seventies, so he backed off. I'm selling my house May 1st because I can't stand it there no more, and it's all because of them.
I'm on you.
And I'm not kidding, you know, and it's sad because I liked the street at one time.
Yeah. Would, it, um, who's the individual that owns that property?
That's a dunker.
That dunk.
I've spoken to him many times and all he can say to me is they're rednecks.
Yeah.
I'm like, that's not a redneck.
No.
You know, there's no politeness at all, and I mean, they're out there midnight, one o'clock, he's, he's called them up at midnight saying, you gonna go to bed sometime?
Yeah.
He's like, who's this? Your goddamn neighbor. And it's just, and it's, it's that bad, and when I'm two houses down and I can't even watch my TV with my doors and windows shut because I, it's just insane, there's no respect at all.
I think that when, um, we get the Sheriff's Department involved with this, let's get the number of the guy that owns that property and give it to the sheriff and let him talk to not the people that are renting, but to the owner of the building, and we're having some issues here right now with this noise and all this stuff, uh, and you're gonna be involved with any kind of lawsuits, in my opinion, that come out of this.
Can I, uh, speak up and say something?
Sure.
I've owned a house on Moulton Avenue for 24 years, 267. I have never, ever had a problem on that street until they started with their act. Now, I understand you say thirty hours, we've had a sheriff, I haven't seen him... in duty, on duty, except for packing up at the Grange Hall, eating his lunch at noontime and doing his paperwork. We need somebody to patrol that at the time when these guys are getting out of work. Now, I have gone in that driveway twice. The first time, a kid came up through sixty-six-five with the front tire up.
Yup.
Pulled in the driveway, I was right behind him in my truck. There was seven of them, not, and I'm one.
How many people live in that place?
Never know.
You don't know. It varies.
Sometimes ten, out of staters.
Yup.
So here...
Sorry, Gary.
Here's the second time, in the last time, I said I wasn't gonna do it again. Guy comes riding a wheelie up the street, pulls in there, I was right behind him. Turned out to be, he's the one that is renting the place. He was an older guy, and he looked right at me and he said, "It was me. I did it." We're trying to register, uh, numbers on, uh, the speed or whatever, and I looked right at him and I said, "This is the second time I've been here. I told you before, I'm not gonna deal with it. The next time, somebody else is coming."
Are they there all the time, or do they...
In the, in the warm weather days, there, those bikes are out and they are in that driveway, there could be anywhere from six to twelve.
Yeah, it, uh...
And I'm glad I don't live in your house, because I'd be over there and somebody would be getting something.
Well, I've lived there fifty-five years, this June, and I never, never see the mess we have up there right now.
The whole neighborhood's turning...
Ignominious debacle.
I think probably... It's coming around out to Middle Road now, there's a kid over there, that's right.
They charge up and down Middle Road there, between us and Chambers Farm, probably.
Especially the last week and a half, they've been running right up through there.
So, it's the same people?
Oh, have they?
I don't think so, different people.
Oh, that's, so that's a different issue.
But it comes from the same place.
Right, they all, it all comes from the same place.
I don't think the one on Middle Road comes from the same place.
Well, it might be, that might be from a couple houses towards Chambers.
Well...
But I mean, it's, they've got a truck that's so loud, somebody does, and goes tearing down through there, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
Then we have the four-wheelers. See, I don't hear all this because I'm at the end.
Right.
But I hear it going the other way, because they go through the intersection and tear up through there.
Pat Murray told me that they go up to the Grange Hall and they're doing birdies and stuff up there.
Yep.
Jean's right there, she don't need that.
No.
I mean...
They're very tall. Yeah.
See, they know, they know they haven't been in trouble, so they just keep it going, and it makes it worse. That's why they're like, I haven't said anything in a year, because the last time I said something, it haunted me. And now, and it still haunts me.
Yeah.
So now, I'm just like, "All right, we're gonna just see what we can do," but now I'm just selling my house, I feel sorry for the next one, but...
Well, like Mrs. Bixby says, it, it's, there's another house up the road, the state troopers were there the other day.
I heard.
Yup. The neighborhood... We need, we need some law enforcement.
How many of those houses, um, does that same guy that owns the house that you're...
Oh, no.
Does he own a lot of those houses?
No, not on our street, he owns that one. The other one is Artis Martin's.
I was gonna say, there's a lot of, there's a lot of units that he owns.
Yes, he owns a lot of units.
All the cabins.
Yeah, he owns the cabins and, uh, the big house on the corner of Seven B.
He owns a lot of houses down through there, but I, I think this one seems to be the only one that he owns that's the problem. The other one is Artis Martin's up there.
Yeah.
They got a truck out, and Doryard tore all the pieces, it's up on Jags, there's trash across the road. I came down through one day and there was a half-burned up ham on the side of the street. You know, I mean, you just threw it across the road.
Because one day I had to talk to Mr. Duncan, and, uh, I told him, "Scott, what goes here, you know? Your place is up in the village, they all look nice, pretty wild cap and everything." I said, "The one next to me looks horrible." He just kinda, like these gentlemen said, looked at me and said, "They're rednecks."
I think, we're talking about the, the, him, I, I, just a different spin. Uh, tenant, tenants can do a lot in the state of Vermont, that the homeowner, that the renter has no control over, you can't just get them out, that I'm aware of. It's, so getting him involved in a lawsuit, I don't know if that's fair to him. Um, because he can't get them out unless they're not paying money or something. The state of Vermont seems to be very good to tenants who are...
Not good.
Being threatened to leave.
How much control?
If that makes sense.
How much control do we have over the sheriff's department?
I mean, can we, can we direct the sheriff to have a guy sit on Moulton Avenue?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes. That looks like it might be a good idea.
They have to be in hours like after two P.M., if they don't wake up till one, and then they start their action from one to one, and it just doesn't stop.
I can hear them at my place, and I know they're coming right from the village.
Oh, yeah, you do, because they're there in a matter of seconds.
They were actually out, well, a week and a half ago, we had warm weather there. I don't know if you heard them.
Yeah, I did, and, you know, I don't, I don't know the owner of these apartment houses, so to speak, but the first time I went into that driveway, and the one that did the wheelie up the street took his helmet off after I said, "I'm not here to give you a hard time, I'm just telling you I'm not gonna put up with it." He took his helmet off and he looked right at me, and he said, "It was me, sir, and I'm sorry, it won't happen again." The next time, it was the landlord that lives there, the one that's renting the place, and he's got all these kids with all these bikes. From there on, I was known as tough guy by the owner of these places, because I confronted them.
And there is a mechanic living there.
And there's been many people that I don't know that have got into their driveway and confronted them, and they threaten them, they surround them, I mean, I never, it's crazy.
I washed my hands with it, and I told you when we talked.
Yup.
My house is paid for, and I'm thinking of putting it on the market and getting the hell out of Clarendon. Because I don't wanna live, my wife walks that street all the time. And there's kids in that neighborhood all the time during the daytime. And we gotta put up with this? I don't think so.
Joyce walks there a lot.
My animals are fenced in my backyard, and I only have one dog. Doesn't get let loose out on the street. I don't worry about the dog, but I do worry about somebody else's kids, and I worry about my wife.
Well, the school is right behind there, and those kids must play out in the field.
Those kids come down through and they know that I have a dog there, and they'll come right over, they call her Yipper, because she yips at them. But she can't get at them.
I, let me propose this to the board. How about if we contact Sergeant Cross from the sheriff's department, and have a meeting with him this week to, down here at the town hall, to discuss what the hell's going on up there, and see what legal steps we could take. Um, and, you know, see what steps they could take as a sheriff's department, or get in touch with the state police.
I think you contact them both, have them both on it. But the other thing that I wondered is the concerns about the oil and all that. What about the health officer doing, I mean, hit it, hit it from all avenues?
I got one more thing I wanna add. On the side of the garage away from his house, there are twenty to twenty-five white bags of garbage on the side of that garage.
Because they, they didn't pay the bills, and they took the dumpster.
So health, so health, health officer can get involved too.
So, after dealing with Sergeant Cross on other issues, his recommendation, he's gonna tell us right up front, he'd like a schedule from you people...
Which we just heard, one to one.
Timing.
When they need to be there.
When they need to be there.
When people get out of work.
Yup.
So mainly five, five, six o'clock.
Four o'clock to seven or eight o'clock.
Three to ten or something, three to eleven.
During the week or weekends?
Week, day.
Doesn't matter, every single day.
On a nice day, and a nice night.
It's always in the morning, and I'm like...
I've never seen you.
You're in bed till noon.
So we're talking late, late afternoon.
Right in.
Yes.
And target it when it's good, good weather, and you know that they're gonna...
Midnight, one o'clock in the morning. I know, because...
I watch them, they, you see, you get stuff shipped to them, because he repairs everybody's stuff, and then at late at night, he takes piles and piles of styrofoam and he burns them in the back.
Which is totally illegal to...
I breathe half of it.
Yeah, he is.
No, it looks like ministry junkyard, I guess. Not good.
Well, first thing before we get Richard involved, and we will get him involved, the health officer, is to get the sheriff's department down here, so we have somebody, so it's not you as a neighbor, you as a neighbor going in there and somebody getting ass with.
I'm gonna take down a few of them before my ass gets, that's all I can tell you.
You have no idea where my mind is. Uh, but, we'll, tomorrow, Katie, all right, we'll give Sergeant Cross a call, and what we'll do is, uh, set up a meeting down here, and we'll have Bob, who's a neighbor, come down.
Yes.
And he can better explain what's going on, given the fact that you're living right next door. And then we'll go from there, we'll try and build case up, I think, the health officer, then after the legal folks get involved with it, then the health officer can come down and, uh, you know, we can go, because there's complete garbage pileup and stuff. Um, we have a legal means to then have him inspect that, representing the town. And I think personally that at some point, we'll get the landlord involved, and maybe the sheriff or the, uh, health officer can inspire him, let me say that, to get these people either squared away or get out. So let's see what happens.
You let me know the day the sheriff's gonna be here, if you need me to be here, I'll be here.
Yeah, you wrote that right there, Mr. Furman.
So let's, we'll, we'll start working on that tomorrow, okay? And then, we just can't go down there like a lynch mob and...
I understand that.
Well, that's where it's going, used to be.
Where I come from.
I understand that.
New York.
That's why after the second time I go in their driveway, I said I wasn't gonna do it again, because I was afraid of what's gonna happen if I do go in there a third time.
Well, seeing to me, like, if you're going on their property...
Yeah, pulling right in their driveway.
Yeah, that, and that gives them the ability to say, you know, "He come in here and threatened us, and I'm just protecting myself."
I understand that.
And that's why I learned over the years, especially doing this kind of stuff, that it's better to have your, uh, police officers come in and do this. Uh, I mean, they may be straddled a little bit too, because of what the legal entity will say. Well, even though you're a police officer, you can't do this, or you can't do that. But this is a start to get this resolved.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Does that sound good to you guys?
Yep.
Do you want me to contact the landlord, or just start with the sheriff's department?
No, we, we can, we can contact the landlord and inform him that we're, we've had a series of, uh, issues, and we are now contacting the police, the sheriffs in this case.
Put him, kinda put him on notice.
Right.
Law enforcement.
Put him on notice.
So we're not...
Open his eyes.
Hmm?
Absolutely, open his eyes.
Yeah, this is what's happening.
Well, there's an environmental issue there too with the well for the school. I mean, I'm, I'm in that circle myself.
Yeah, of course.
So, I mean, if he's got chemicals, he's dumping all over the place.
Well, even if he's working in the garage and he has chemicals that spill onto the floor or whatever, I mean, that's, where's it, it's gonna leak someplace.
There's something going on in that garage every single day, every day. Whether it's a truck, car, bike, four-wheeler.
One night they were out there...
Drive by, drive by and look at the lawn, and then you won't need to ask any more questions of what's going on there.
They were out there pressure washing one night, eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
I thought, "How's Bob getting any sleep?"
I thought he was, eleven o'clock.
Don't you have to have a waste oil permit from the E.P.A. in Valenanoise, if you're running a business?
Yeah, you got... I would think if you're running a business, I think so.
No, but even, like, if I change oil in my pickup out in my driveway, technically, you're not allowed to have waste oil.
Well, that's, that's kind of a residential thing, is...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know where the rules fall on that.
Probably the rules will lay where a business and stuff, they don't...
But this, does he run a business in there?
So that's what we need to establish, that's why we're saying, we gotta...
There's all kinds of motorcycles, four-wheelers, cars.
It's a private business.
That's making difference though.
Everybody knows him, it's, you know, it's not a business, but it's a business. He'll tell you it's all family. That's what he does.
Yeah.
Yup.
Well...
Redneck business.
Oh, we'll see.
So contact the health officer as well? Contact the health officer.
I would, I would, yeah, I would put the, I would put it on the health officer's radar that we have reports that there's waste oil and issues with trash.
But explain to Richard first that we're gonna have legal folks investigate this.
I'd fill him in on what's going on, but we definitely have health concerns as well.
All right, you guys, we're gonna do the best we can.
Appreciate it.
And I'm not gonna let it lay down, because I hate that when people take advantage of you people who, you know, you lived there all your lives, stuff like this, and then some...
On a snowball, it's just...
Yeah.
They could do what they do and be respectful, and nobody'd say nothing. But they, it's like they, they, they get up on it.
No worries back there.
I worked in Artie Hetzel and Patty. I worked with Artie at G.E. for eight and a half years. They ride their bikes, he'll bring his truck down Moulton Avenue. He'll stop with a bag, garbage bag, and he'll pick up all the trash, all the way down Moulton, all the way down Alfrasia Road, so that him and his wife can ride their bikes without garbage all over the place. My wife walks Middle Road up to the farm, back down, out, down Alfrasia, all the way up to the post office and back down to our house every day. Every day, whether it's raining or not.
What, what this fam, what these guys are doing always endangering you folks.
Pedestrians, animals, kids, you name it. You gotta look at all of it.
Well, if you...
You can't single somebody out, my wife, no.
If you're, if you're doing wheelies and all this stuff, you're going over the speed limit.
There's no doubt about it.
You're going up there seventy miles an hour.
Yeah, so, I wanna, that, we're just gonna move on.
I, I'm not gonna say another word, you guys can deal with it.
One other thing I will say, because Gary and I talked, and I spoke with Artie, and the only reason Art Hetzel is not here tonight, he's gotta work.
Okay. I knew there had to be something.
Yeah, otherwise he said he would be here.
I talked to him already too.
Well, the only problem is, we're made into the law enforcement, of what powers they actually wanna, how involved they wanna get. We're gonna have to be on them.
Well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to really be on, on them to spend serious time there.
But that's why I wanna meet with him in person, right here, with a couple people hearing...
I'll want somebody else to come, let me know.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, I'll tell Bob.
Yeah, Bob will let me know.
Once we've arranged the meeting time, and then, uh, we'll go from there.
Any, any time would be good for me, except next Monday, I know I'm gonna be out of town.
I can be here this week, but then I'm gone for two weeks, so, let me know what's going on.
It, it all depends on when Cross can get down here. And I think, Katie, when you mention it to him, if, uh, he wants to call one of the state police to join us in this conversation, that'd even be better. So, let's see what happens. All right, guys, we're gonna move on, but...
Thank you.
I hope you people can resolve it, that's all I can say.
I hope so too.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Thank you, guys, for coming in.
Yup.
Night, guys.
Hey, goodnight, guys, thank you.
All right, do the best you can.
Pretty well for an old duck.
All right, all right. Uh, open meeting law discussion. Alright, alright, uh, open meeting law discussion. Um, the reason I wanted to have this is, I just wanna clarify with, uh, our, our new board member. There are, there are responsibilities that the-
That's all I have.
Select Board has relative to what we can and can't do, over the telephone and all this kinda stuff in open meetings. One of the biggest things is, we can talk to each other on the phone, we've done it for years, uh, we can't make any kinda decisions as a group, only in open meeting. Uh, one of the things that, we get a lot of information from the state or other entities, that will come maybe to my house, or Rob via email, and what we do is just put, this is what we were told, to get that information out to everybody else on email, you put, um, just a notice of, uh-
I'm, I am aware-
Information law.
I'm aware of the open meeting laws.
Okay. Um, and no decision, uh, is made until you have a warranted meeting. So that's, I just wanted to make that clear. Anybody else have anything else they wanna add to that?
Oh, I think we've all been-
Goodnight, guys.
Hey, Rob. We've all been involved in town for quite some time, whether it be a Lister, or whatever, I think we all are pretty well versed in where we are.
Mm-hmm. Put this into my, to me, the secret drawer. Um, I just wanted to bring that up, Art, I'm sure you're aware of a lot of it, but I just wanted to, the new guy on the street. Alright, Carreras Act 250 sign off.
Two copies of the application in there.
Yep.
One for us to have him file, and then one for him. I believe it's page twenty-one and twenty-two, that need to be filled out and signed off to complete the application. Um, and this is Mike Carrera, who is applying.
Nice to meet you, Mike.
Could I take one of those, Mike, and we can look at one down here?
I talked with Jeff today, 'cause he left the packet on my desk, um, and he said there's really nothing beyond the documents that affect you guys, basically, but you're more than welcome to look at it where.
Yeah, I'll pass this on, I've already seen most of it, but where we, where the select board chair-
Yeah, that's-
That's the sign is this piece.
Yeah, and, um, there's one before it too, I think. It's tw- is it twenty-one and twenty-two, is what Jeff put down in there?
We have to fill all this out?
Now, it's probably just north of the old Pepsi plant. Right next borders it, or?
Yeah, the upper field.
Upper field, okay.
Oh, wait. Obviously, because, that's because it was zoned commercial then, that's why they're putting you through it?
Act 250. They don't tell you the grocery list of what you need to go through, they tell you the first step, that takes you three or four months, then you do the next step, that takes you three or four months, I was six months waiting on that white lane study.
Wow.
Not to the effects you guys and all, it's-
So Katie, these are the two items that have to be-
Yeah, and you just check the boxes, um, I believe, uh, Jeff highlighted what he thinks should be checked off.
Yes, he did.
But we do have, um, we do offer rescue, because we pay for the regional ambulance. I think he said that we don't, but-
The house is gonna be three hundred and fifty-eight feet from the road.
A little factor would like that.
That's I'm trying to get as close to that as I can before it starts to get soft.
Are you, you completed all your necessary stuff?
I hope so. I got a town permit from you guys.
It's on my desk this morning, so yeah.
So-
His building permit's been approved, it's on my desk waiting to give it to me.
All I'm waiting for now is Act 250.
Got his driveway permit from the state, he's done everything he's-
And when I-
Waste water permit.
When I talked to the person from Act 250, she did say that, you know, in this case, because it was attached to Vermont Country Store, Act 250, that's the only reason you guys got involved with this, but the towns can go and do the municipality and the school stuff, we can just check it all off, and the select board can sign it, so.
Could I see that copy for just a second, with Jeff's highlights?
Yeah, there's two copies here, one's of school too.
So technically, you gotta check, yes, for police protection too, 'cause we finish yours.
Yeah, I would think so.
See this, two.
Yeah, that's the, yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion that this form be filled out with, you ready for a list, Katie? Fire protection, and I'll, do you want me to go ahead and check them off as I go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Fire protection is yes, police protection as yes, as we pay for the sheriff's department. Rescue service as, uh, yes, because we pay regional ambulance. Road maintenance as yes, because we have a road crew, and solid waste as the municipality does not offer it. Oh, because we're, yeah, okay.
You need some white out.
So solid waste is yes in that case, because of our transfer station. Um, and for the last three questions, I know he didn't highlight, but I believe they're all no. Except the last one, the last one would be yes, 'cause would deficiencies occur without this project? No. If the deficiencies are common in many projects, this project create burdens which are disproportionate to taxes? No. If, are we available to answer any questions? Yes. And then for the school page, that we have, elementary, middle, and high, the schools, yes, they have additional capacity, no, that we do not have other comments, and can we answer questions? Yes.
That's right.
And I'll make that a motion, and ask that the chairman sign both on behalf of the board.
Do you second that motion?
I'll second it.
Alright, any further discussion?
Just one, one thing, Robert, I'll ask you, when you were going through the roads, you said road, that is state road.
Yes.
That's not ours, seven B up there.
Correct, so, but either way, it's provided, it's, it's provided, either way, whether it's the state or us, it's provided.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to clarify that.
We're only talking one point five acres. Is that?
Seven.
Oh, what's gonna be disturbed, okay.
And I guess on behalf of me, I apologize on behalf of our state for putting you through this, 'cause this is absolute, this is, this is ridiculous. So.
Who?
Very much so.
What's the name?
You're talking Act 250, one person's putting you through it, okay. Maybe, once you get approved, maybe let us know who gave you such a hard time, how's that?
I've been homeless since then.
Really?
I, I had the state give me a driveway permit. Water pump earlier.
Okay.
She informed Act 250 what I was doing, because I had no knowledge that I had to go through Act 250, 'cause I-
Okay.
So, since then, it's just snowball, 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 I was supposed to have a house by the end of October. So, I guess I was okay with being homeless.
Now it's broke.
This is too much.
Alright, there's been a motion made, seconded, we've had some discussion, is there any other discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright.
And Katie, just when you get ready to send it in, just white out that one extra check mark I put in there.
Okay, I think I'm supposed to give the packet to you at the sign on.
And I did fill out this one for us.
Okay.
So it matches what we did.
Okay.
They're costing us money now, 'cause we can't tax you until you get it built.
Alright, well, I'm signing, um, twenty, twenty-two certificate of highway mileage. Wanna present that to the board, uh, Cash, or Heidi, whoever.
This is just something we do yearly, and-
It's our yearly.
The mileage has not changed since last year.
I was gonna say, there's no change, right?
There's no change.
And it's been checked over and everything matches?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Same as last year.
Okay. In that case, um, it's only one person, right, we're gonna make Mike's arm tired?
I think it'll be all, is there five spaces or just one? It's just mine?
Is it all of us?
I, I would take it as all of them.
I can't remember.
And then I think Gloria has to sign it tomorrow, or-
She has signatures.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the certificate, um, approve the certificate.
I'll second it.
Alright, any further discussion, hearing on, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, start signing. While you guys are signing that, Steve's Country Market has a liquor license, where the hell is that?
Is everything in order, Gloria, since it goes through you? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve Steve's Country Market, uh, liquor license, and I believe we all sign it. Yeah.
I think so.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I didn't wanna be first.
We'll send this, this way. Alright, A and R, MRGP report.
Do we wanna know?
A new report, um, basically saying where we're at with it, and we are where we should be. Um, so that's, just needs to sign off as well.
Um, I think, this is in relationship to the projects then, that you've been doing, Cash?
Yes.
The MRGP permit.
Can you, since probably not all of us are aware what's in it, can you give us just an update on what we have done, and what's on the horizon?
With the, um, pulling together the, um, scope of the work, with the, um, I, um, lost words. Pardon me?
East Street?
Yeah, the high, uh, the grants that we done, like on East, East Street, um, and our high priority roads, those recommend they done.
Our next target is to complete all high priority roads by twenty twenty-five, and we are on target for that.
Cause you did, cause Quarterline was one of the ones they had us do.
Quarterline, um, another was Anderson Hill.
Yep.
Was a high priority, very high priority, um, our next project's gonna be tier road, on the backside.
The Ira side.
The Ira side.
Okay.
That's slated for this year.
And you did east, and East Street was part of it too, right?
East Street, we got a grant for, and that was like, not double grant, but that was two sections, the other section was, was East Street by Sunny Young Lane.
Mm-hmm.
And the second phase of that was the north end of East Tema Road, was tied in together with that grant.
Okay.
That particular grant.
So, tier roads on the horizon then, and what, was there any others that are considered that high priority list?
Yeah, there's other ones.
There are?
I mean, I haven't got the list in front of me right now. Um, another one that was, we did extensive work on Haven Hill, which was a real high, high priority. It was moderate, I believe.
Uh, so, just remind, I mean, reminding me of the MRGP stuff, 'cause we've danced that dance, like, Act 250 makes us dance. Um, the penalty for not getting in compliance in that amount of time is grant shares, and they can even, they can even penalize us, right?
Yeah, and it all works with the FEMA and stuff like that, if I remember right, that right, Katie, on our percentages and stuff.
Um, I'm not sure what the penalty is of not complying.
I think the legislature, they have, the legislature is still working on that, that's one of those things that they created the structure, I know you guys are familiar with, um, the legislature sometimes putting the cart before the horse.
No, they don't ever do that.
So that is one of those, this is one of those instances, but we have been told, um, when we have attended, um, workshops, uh, on MRGP and MRGP reporting, that it would, um, im- impact our grant funding on the state level, so.
Hundred percent.
I'm not sure who, who's gonna manage that, maintain that, or, but there, I know that there's a reporting portal, and all this information has to be uploaded to the state, and it's all done by road segment, and so, you know, we talk about Quarterline Road was one of those projects, and how many segments were a part of that? Four.
Four segments on Quarterline alone.
So each one of those segments had to be updated in the state system, to show that those were brought up to spec. That kinda stuff is what they're talking about, that's the reporting that had to be done, and then, um, the state did put together a fee structure, so there is an annual fee based on population. So the town of Clarendon has to pay a one thousand one hundred and fifty dollar fee, um, permit fee to the state, um, every year, and that, that check did cut in today's check run as well, on, in, is, in the warrants that you guys.
Which I'm sure when all of our roads are compliant, that that's gonna go away, right?
I can, um, email you guys, forward you like our progress report, the RRPC-
We're actually ahead of schedule on it.
I, I knew we were ahead, I, I guess-
We've been pushing the door, get them through.
The last thing that I'll bring up, and this is probably where the rubber meets the road on some of the controversies surrounding MRGP. Heard through the grapevine, I don't know if it's accurate, maybe you can shed some light on it, Cash, but I heard that there was some issues with East Street and needing to put some material in, because once things started thawing and moving, that some of the project moved, and needed to be repaired.
Yep, it's gotta-
So what kinda warranty is the state offering on these grant projects if they fail after the fact?
Well, they appro, she approved it.
I know, what I'm saying is, now it's been approved.
Yeah, now we-
Don't we have recourse to go back on them and say, well, it failed, so you should be paying for the repair? Because that's added, that's added expense that they put on us by having us do the project.
Requiring that project.
And now, part of the project they required failed, so it had to have more material, it had to have whatever, so, is, I, is there recourse to the state to say, hey, your project that you approved, and you said this is all good, failed, where's pony up the check, where's the check for what we had to do to fix it? It's on, I mean-
We can, yeah, pursue into that.
Because certainly they're putting added costs on us in that case, in a way.
Well, so, Heidi, we're talking about that, was, what was that other two hundred and forty dollar charge we got today?
Um, that was-
Part of that?
Yeah, so when the, um-
Katie.
When the initial road erosion inventory had to take place, then that was part of the MRGP, we got a grant, so the RRPC could help do this.
This topic, that's our-
Um, after that was compiled, part of their fee structure was we had to submit with our road erosion-
Yeah, because you have to give this to him, right?
Yearly?
But that, no, that was a one time, back when we-
But they just caught us up, caught up on it?
Yeah, it was like-
We did that when we were supposed to, a couple of years ago, but just, I think what Cash is getting at is-
There's added costs that you don't see.
Yeah, there's hidden costs here coming along, down the road.
Surprise, surprise.
They're, they're making these regulations and then throwing fees at us, and we have no control.
They're writing the rules as a program- They're writing the rules as the program goes.
Then technically, we're in violation of the law.
Correct.
So, we, we, our hands are pretty tied.
Your hands are always tied when you take money from the state. You're getting grants, you're gonna be, your hands are gonna be tied.
Can I just see what it is, Mike, before we say what we're gonna do?
Do you have, um, the whole packet?
I think we're supposed to sign.
Can I sign that too?
This is a town copy. Is this the other one?
Uh, my, yeah.
Are we supposed to sign on this one, Katie, or just this one?
Um.
That's them, isn't it?
Yeah, I think that's, that's, um.
This, we gotta sign this one.
Yeah, that's the actual company.
Here, Bob, we gotta sign right here. That one here.
Is that okay?
On the liquid licenses, it's supposed to be in this page here, not that one.
Oh, okay.
And this grant application. The grant application, we all have to sign it.
This is a paving grant.
That's, that's the next. Yeah, but, um, I was gonna say, that's down the list. This is the one we're on right now.
Oh, yeah, but I was, oh, you guys were.
I guess the only thing I would say is, it, it is only you that signs it, Mike, but, um, there's a section in there that states that you're fully aware of all the accompanying documentation that goes along with it, and that you're held liable for signing off on behalf of the board, so.
It's all you, Mike.
Mister Carey.
Broad shoulders, you gotta limber up. I mean, we don't have, I, it's one of those things, we truly don't have a choice, so.
No, I know.
They've got us over the coals on it.
Alright, so did you, you guys, somebody wanna make a motion?
No.
I'll make a motion that you sign it for the board, Mike. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, thank.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
You can tell we're all excited about it.
Um, start the conversation on reappointments.
Well, I guess the first thing, are you willing to continue to be the primary for the airport committee?
Yeah.
You have been.
Yup.
Did all of you present?
Yup.
Um, so I started the ones that select boards members should need to be on, and then highlighted the vacant positions. Um, and then, um, Ashley Robinson was interested in being the community center board.
And Dave Potter is looking to get, um, back representing the town in Rutland County Solid Waste District.
Yes, I believe, uh, Dick's.
Was alternate last year.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do the alternate.
You'll, you'll stay the alternate, Bob?
Yes.
Um, do you mind just putting that down on the piece of paper when you do? Go ahead and reappoint.
Which piece? This one?
The Rutland County Solid Waste one, if you fill in Bob as the alternate.
I'd offer to be the airport alternate, but the issue is, is all those meetings are while I'm working.
Yes, you usually.
So, I can't really do it. You willing to?
Yeah, I could do it.
So Art be the alternate for airport?
Gives you a good chance to take off.
Who invited George tonight?
Art did, I think.
Um, who was the state police? Rick.
I was. They haven't been doing nothing in a long time, uh, but, uh, if it stays open, put me down for it, and I'll get with them and see if there's anything.
I was gonna say, so you're willing to stay on it?
Yeah.
Um, Rick was the sheriff.
I was gonna say, so basically, the only other one we gotta determine is the sheriffs. Communicator.
That tree ward, was that Rockwell or no?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
He's the.
Uh, yeah, I think Clayton is the fire warden.
Clayton, yes, you're right. Sorry, Clayton's the fire warden, uh, Joe Peterson was the tree.
But he hasn't been that for a couple of years.
Yeah, but he stepped down.
So we gotta find a new tree warden.
Yeah.
Right.
It doesn't have to be someone, the law changed where it doesn't have to be someone who's in town anymore anyways, even if he were to move out of town.
What exactly does the tree warden do?
The history behind it is that if there, um, there are trees that need to be planted on town properties, that they would assist in that, as kind of a pseudo arborist, um, or like when he did help with the, um, our clerk.
Town forest.
Town forest.
Yeah. So I'd say, can we approach Joe again and just see if he's interested? If Joe's not interested, maybe, maybe Jim Philbrook would?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know if Jim would do it or not.
But he had some health issues.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure where exactly he's at with that. Who was our, did we even have a police special officer last year when we appointed?
That was also vacant. I think Matt had an idea. I don't know if he approached him, or if the guy wasn't interested or something.
Okay. Um.
I think Nelson Tiff, he was that.
I was gonna say Nelson Tiff was for years.
Like, he didn't have that qualification anymore or something, he said.
That'd be good for CJ.
Yeah, there you go. Um, if nobody else wants to be the sheriff, I'll take that on. The sheriff liaison.
I'll mark it down.
Nobody else is jumping at it, so.
Katie, do you have whiteout stuff?
I have a pen.
Should've put Bob's name in here, but it wasn't very clear.
So we have two planning commissions vacancies?
Um, yes, Gail did not want to re-up, and Brian Johnson.
Oh, really? Okay. So I would say we need to post those, obviously.
Yeah.
Does that have to be someone on the planning commission?
That's what's missing.
It, it is the planning commission.
Oh.
That we have vacancies on.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. So we gotta find two people to join them.
I think Gloria would work good on it.
Yeah, she knows what's going on in town.
Maybe Mister Carrera, maybe Mister Carrera do it.
We're on the planning.
I was thinking about the tree ward.
Um.
There you go.
Now, what about zoning board of adjustment? Who's getting off that?
Um, I think Brian Johnson, and then, um, Bob Underhill's position was up. He was resigned last year, so it's like, just continuing vacancy.
Okay, so we need to post both those then, too?
Yeah.
Did Brian end up moving out of town?
He is in the process of selling his house and moving.
He is? Okay. And the zoning administrator is posted already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, what's your mailing address? Better, here.
What do you need?
Just fill that out. It's.
I don't wanna fill it out.
Any other suggestions before we?
Can you write over the top of where I just waited it? If not, just.
You gonna join the rec committee?
Yeah.
It's signed over there. No, I, yeah, I can get it.
He's been hassling me.
Cemetery committee could use a few members too.
Matt's been hassling me about that.
No, no time like the present. We can do it right now. Be all set.
You gotta post it.
Yeah, I didn't know, like, for Ashley, do you have to post a vacancy to be on the, for an addition?
Well, I was gonna say, the, like, don't we have standing vacancies posted on there anyway? I don't, I think technically it's considered posted because it's been up there as a standing vacancy.
I would just go ahead and.
She wanted to be on what?
Community center.
Yeah.
Which I don't.
I was gonna say, that's not on our list, right? Oh, yes, it is.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
I just asked Matt, like, if you could add members, and he said, oh, yeah, that's fine.
So Ashley's gonna join that? So otherwise, everybody's been checked in with, and they're all happy to stay on then?
Yes.
I think her husband would be good on the recreation.
There you go.
Okay.
Recreation certainly's got, certainly has space, no doubt about that. Well, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve what's been discussed, um, as we have it, and post the two planning commissions seats and the ZBA.
Dave Potter too, you did that, right? And Bob Bixby is the alternate?
Yeah, I said as, as discussed.
Okay.
What'd you say?
Just, um, I believe the website has, like, tree warden, special officer, all those. You want those, like, listed?
They all should be posted.
Yeah, everything, everything that's vacant should be listed.
Yeah, everything vacant, post it.
That was a motion, Robert?
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Alright, is there any further discussion? Good thing this isn't football night.
Sap to boil, though.
Oh, wow. All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Talking about sap. Not much ran today. You guys turned the vacuum pump off?
It's on.
We're just gonna go back to Mike.
It was less than a hundred gallons there.
That's the road mileage, was that?
Yeah.
That was me just.
Alright, certificate of. Certificate of compliance. I had that around here someplace.
The Walker Mountain grant.
So I was gonna say, what, is this for out near McCormick's? Is that what you're putting in for?
Out for, yup, from, uh, the new bridge by Bowens there, out to.
That's this here.
Just past Wilder Bridge.
Um, it's two.
Past the McCormick, uh, the.
Wilder Bridge here.
The, that's the corner bridge, right?
Yeah.
Alright, it's this one.
The breaks beyond the bridge.
So to that break?
Yes.
Yeah. You all have to sign it.
Total reclaim.
Uh, when you're.
Ground.
Ground down and everything?
Yeah.
That whole board, then?
Yeah, the whole board has signed.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we apply for that grant.
Is there a second for discussion? Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Robert, let's see if we second it.
Yup, Bob.
I do.
Yeah, there, the two documents within the grant need sign off. It's, uh, certification, or certification of compliance and the annual financial plan. Which is a part of the grant, but.
It's all part of the grant, right?
I have reviewed the annual financial plan that Katie put together, and it is accurate.
So I've we've motioned to approve the grant, so I think we're covered.
Yeah.
I think we cover it.
Um, there's also, we're putting in Walker Mountain for our first priority, but we also have an application for South Creek Road as our number two priority.
For that far end?
Shimco.
From the ledges around?
To, uh, oh, what's his name? Ray.
Raymond's?
Raymond.
So not to go all the way to.
Go to Raymond's driveway, there's a break right there.
There's a break there.
That, that road near the Brown Mississauga, that town line is in good shape, real good shape. I think George is hanging around so he can get his walk, Quarterline paved or something.
Have we heard any, uh, rumblings of?
I was wondering if you could do my driveway.
Have we heard any rumblings of, uh, how much money there is in the fund and what they're talking? I mean, the state's supposedly sitting on tons and tons of money, so.
Just in the, um, like, annual letter packet that they sent out, it's like, you are eligible up to two hundred thousand per program.
Okay.
But that's kinda standard. They say that every year, so.
One eighty's been the norm.
That's about what, yeah.
Oh, that's right. There's something I wanna bring up on the highway.
Uh, too late.
Yep.
You're getting nervous.
There's two documents to sign in there.
Two?
Yeah.
Um, do, you wanna do it now, then?
Sure.
What do you got?
Uh, we're under early fa, phases of the bridge replacement on Creek Road by Hawkins.
Oh, that, that one over there, okay.
Actually, last week, we, um, we get estimates and stuff of what's gonna cost. Actually, a surveyor came down, surveyed it out, staked it out for actually, when the stakes will actually mean that a contractor that we, we end up doing a project, it's ready to go with a contractor and stuff. So we're in the early stages.
And that's gonna be a new box culvert, basically?
Box culvert.
Um, two, a little bit wider, hopefully.
Yes, and actually, if you wanna see one, I just learned that. They did the project in Pittsburgh up on Fire Hill, just past the quarry by Amia.
That one works out. Maybe the one on Molten Avenue can get done next, because that one's still pretty narrow, too.
Yeah.
If this one works out.
That, I'm more concerned about the dry bridge that shouldn't even be there by Pankoskis.
Well, you got that too. But if they keep on awarding structures grants.
Well, I, to be honest with you, if anything, I would actually look at that one up on Walker Mountain Road past arts, past McCormick's. That bridge there, the, the guardrail poles are all rotten off, and I, I personally don't know what the structure underneath it looks like.
The corner, you're talking about the Wilder Bridge?
Wilder Bridge.
That one was on our list. They're gonna be, it was after Kingsley, when we, we got a list of bridges.
Okay.
And it was on, it was on the list. It was on the list.
So to me, that, I mean, the, the bridge was bought by the pole stop is, is structurally, looks like good shape, I think. I don't know none about it, but.
Yeah, the, uh.
It's narrow and.
That, uh, that bridge was on it. I'm trying to think what the other one was. We were, we were pretty, because we commented when we got the list about how good a shape we actually were, bridge-wise.
Yeah.
Because that one was slated for, I forget how far down the road. It was like, it was a ways out.
So it is, I don't know.
I wanna say, for some reason, twenty twenty-five sticks in my head, but I, that they were gonna start talking about it, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong.
We might have national structures grants, money coming out, so.
Well, national, but that one, like I say, was on the state, just like the rest of them.
Okay. I, to me, that's the worst bridge we got in town.
Yeah, well, I would agree.
Kingsley.
Yeah.
I, actually, I'd like to change it. Not have to turn in it.
Which they may, they very well may propose that.
Approach, and especially on the southern end of it. Kinda swing it this way instead of having it like that.
Uh, when they start working there. George, did you have anything for us?
Yeah, I was gonna give you a, a, a report. Shouldn't take more than an hour.
You do have one.
So much for football.
Thing on the agenda.
Mike? Mike, wait a minute.
Town her, uh, town hall service. I didn't even see that. George, can you wait about a half an hour?
Absolutely.
Wanna, wanna report on this, Katie?
Um, that is a quote from Gloria Schgut from Mont Digital. Um, our server's been like crashing, kind of. Um, so, and I think it was due next year to be upgraded, but it should be done sooner.
Spring of 23 was when it was slated. What was the, um, did it crash again today, out of curiosity?
So this was a quote that you're. So the quote is for 5,492 big ones. And you want us to consider this tonight, then?
It's like seven years old.
Yeah.
I did my server at school. It was half that.
We have the backup tapes, you know, the whole, you know, that's all included in it.
Are they all about same?
I don't wanna, I don't either. You could talk to, um, Vincent at Vermont Digital.
Take a look at it. Pass it that way. Anybody, uh?
I asked him if he could split it between the two years in case we need to do that and he said they were fine with that.
So.
We did some by June and then the rest after July. I don't know where it would stand, but I just, if that was a possibility with him, he said yes.
But are we gonna limp along between now and June?
I don't know.
I mean, it's only March. Three months.
So, 'cause I, you had, you had blips last week, right? And then, how many times did it go out last week, out of curiosity?
I think it was a week before elections.
It was the whole phone system, that's who changes the phone system, that's through the server. So I think it's gone down twice in the past three weeks.
When would he start working on this?
When he tried to call?
Well, I tried.
Yeah, he tried to call, it's like not ignoring you.
When would he start working on this?
Whenever we want. He hasn't ordered it yet, so.
The other thing is, is $105 an hour plus travel to put it in from Rutland to here. And we're dropping over 5,500, we're driving, dropping 5,500 bucks on it. You can install it for us, come on. Like, you're not doing any, any favors with this, in my opinion, but I don't know who else is out there in Rutland, though, as far as like reputable server. I don't, I don't know who else.
Where would we get that money from, Heidi?
Um, so because it's unbudgeted, you would need to look to take it out of your contingency fund. Or your contingency expense line item. You have a, um, a budget status report in front of you.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, there's not that much in there, so you would either overexpend that. Or if you could make it to do the half, half, then you would stay within your budget, but kinda is what you decide to make it, so. Katie, the end game on it anyways is that, you know, Gloria just said that the server itself is set to expire in spring of 23. And we didn't budget it because we didn't know about it to budget it.
Yeah.
This last budget season, so it won't be budgeted. It will not be a budgeted expenditure for next year either.
But I think it's important. It's important for the town hall to have the, you know, things working. I mean, you can't.
Kind of runs the town and stuff.
Yeah, so I think any kind of a. Anybody wants to say that, well, you didn't have to spend that money, I.
If the server goes down, none of us can do our jobs, so.
So, here's what I would say. And I, I mean, obviously, we can call an emergency meeting. If it crashes and it's gone, we can do an emergency. If, if we hit that, but what I would Art just offered, and I think I would make a motion that let's let Art make a phone call to Vincent and do a little negotiating on this. And also, he brought up a good point. It, it, what's in here is a new backup system. Which, my question is, our backup system should be able, use the same backup system on the new server with, with your current cartridges. So that you don't have to buy a new backup system.
I'll have to ask him if it's.
If it's possible.
Possible.
Because.
Is this the same server that we've been using?
Oh, yeah. This, this server's been here.
Seven, eight years, he said.
I was gonna say, I think I can remember us early on when I remember one of the things that came up. Well, it was probably about the time the wiring got done too, wasn't it?
That's when it moved it from, it was back here over to there.
I was gonna say, and the wire, and the wires got put in and more professionally and. But I'll, I'll make that a motion to authorize Art to do some negotiating and then maybe we can have a final figure for next meeting. Two weeks. That's not, you know, that's not throwing it out too far. Hopefully, hopefully it doesn't. If it, if it all of a sudden starts crashing daily, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta do something, obviously.
Just have an emergency meeting and go for it.
Was there any explanation, like, was there anything that they tweaked, anything that failed that they fixed?
He tried to go through a bunch of stuff and see if the phone was plugged into the server and it was on its own. It just goes through it, so he tried to
Okay.
See what was causing it.
So he didn't replace any components, then? Okay.
What if he replaced the last?
The battery backup.
The battery backup.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that failed.
Yeah. That's notorious.
We wanna get it probably done before tax season starts.
Yeah, that would certainly be.
I would appreciate that.
I think either way, I think we're talking about if we can negotiate something, maybe we can do it like what you're talking about. Maybe we can split it that end of June, 'cause that's not.
June, July.
That's not that far away and then, and then it would be in place before tax season and before.
Negotiate the travel time or the, you know.
But by doing it at the end of June, you're gonna go into July with a whole new budget.
Yeah.
So.
And then whatever the balance is, you could pay.
Yeah.
It adds up though.
He's here eight hours. Repair guy 20 years ago come look at a machine. So Art, are you, if, if you talk to him and say that we're shooting for the end of June so that we can have some money from the, um, July, the new budget.
Well, I don't wanna tell him that. I'm just gonna tell him we're hurting for cash and he's gotta do something better with the price. I'm not gonna tell him to wait for next year. We got lots of cash.
Well, let's not. But what I'm, what I'm suggesting is to say that, to your point, yeah, we're out of cash, but if we wait till the end of June, we would have some uh, possibility, let me use that term, of using cash from the next year's budget as well.
That means I'm out of here?
Don't use that. Don't go there.
Uh, well, I'd say I'd.
Was that a motion, Rick?
That was a motion.
But there was no second.
Motion.
I'll second that.
Hold up in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I was quicker than I thought.
Okay, yeah, it was, kinda. Hey, George, what do you, what do you have first?
My golly.
Can, can I take this?
Yeah, okay. It's gotta be an email anyway. He probably emailed it to you, didn't he? Yeah.
There you go.
Anyways, good evening, gentlemen, and you too, Cash. Pleasure to be here. And just a brief report is what I have in mind, oral report. Of course, you have the yearly report that we have in, in the, uh, our bulletin. And I just, as I've done in the past few years, come in and let you know a few highlights. First, uh, thing that I wanted to acquaint you with is, is you'll probably recall we're gonna have some new software that works on the grand list portion of our, our, uh, computers. And the first module is, hit the listers here recently and it had to do with the sales, uh, studies. Where we have to fill out a whole bunch more detail than what we had to do in the past. But, uh, so Bob and I have taken training on that and I guess we're first, ready to, to go ahead on that. Now, there's supposed to be more training, I guess, come in through the next few weeks and months. Heidi might have more information on that than I do. Um, so that's one piece. Another piece, we've had, uh, 74, uh, transactions and roughly 74 transactions in town that are, will affect the grand list. And the total result would be an increase in the value of our, all of our, uh, properties. Uh, we have permits for eight new houses and some are sort of started constructing. And you heard about one here this evening, Mr. Carrera. And let's see, uh, what else? Oh. We've had several permits come in for sheds, pools, garages and house additions, which again, will even not as much, will help the total value of properties in town. And, and the, since their, our last, uh, session of grand list filing, we've only had three grievance requests and only one of them had one to do with a monetary value. Two of them are dealing with property lines and acreage and stuff. But, uh, which may or may not affect the value. So that's what's happening right at the moment. Um, any questions?
I don't think so, George.
I did, I was, uh, I, I, I'm, I was thinking of going out on a limb and see if I, if, uh, about the tree warden job.
Yeah.
Sounds like a squirrel.
Thank you, George.
Anyways, I said.
Well, sorry to make you sit.
What's that?
I'll take your letter of interest.
Okay. So I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Should've had you on first, George.
That's fine. I enjoy listening to everything. I even signed in so that, you know.
Oh, there you go.
All right, um, Katie, do you have anything you?
I do not.
Heidi?
Um, first, I just wanna welcome Art to the board.
I was gonna say that.
Your first official meeting.
She beat us to it.
And, um, I've given you each an updated budget status report, uh, for your review.
All right, Cash.
Welcome Art to the board and.
Good luck.
No, send him my condolences.
Bob, do you have anything?
No, other than, uh, welcome Art to the board and see what he has to say here from now.
Art, welcome to the board. Appreciate your, uh, thoughts. Do you have anything, Rob?
Um, the, uh, thing I would say is a, a thank you to, I know I chime in as well, welcoming Art, but also a thank you to Rick Wilber for his time on the board. I think that's appropriate as well, and I'm not sure. We've done a lot of things traditionally in the past, so I guess we can leave that up to some discussion, but um, thank you to him as far as the time he did put in and, like everybody has said, welcome to Art and um, I hate to bring it up, Cash, but can we get some gravel by Norm Bowens?
Actually, he's starting to love law.
Feels like it's getting deeper every morning, I'll tell you that.
I would've been plowed out this last week.
Art, you have anything that you want to, uh?
Well, I thank the voters for coming out and supporting me. Um, kind of an honor to be here, except sitting next to him. Sorry. We'll see how things go.
That's why you sat there.
All right, at this time, I entertain the emotion.
So move, second.
Wow, you beat Rob.
He did. He beat me tonight.
Hold up in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed?